Okay, may I call the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meaning of the High Point Regional Board of Ed to order. Please stand for the flag. Pledge of limitations.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the Public Meetings Act statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent in New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the Clerk of the boroughs of Branchville and Sussex, and the townships of Frankfurt, Lafayette, and Wantage. Our mission statement, High Point Regional High School, in partnership with staff, family, and community, is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible, productive members of a diverse society. So next, I get to administer another office to Mr. Thomas Van Stone. Now, I guess, Mr. Stone. The poor gentleman is not able to join us at our rework. All right, I'm going to give you this, most of what you're going to be speaking. So, basically, you're going to insert your name, so it's already there, right? And you can read it, I'd be your pleasure. Thomas Van Stone, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the foundations established in the United States and the state of the authority of the people. So, I, Thomas Van Stone, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications described by law for the office of Member of the Board of Education, and I am not disqualified as a vote pursuant to RS ninety four dash one, nor disqualified due to conviction of crime or events listed in NJ S eighteen A twelve dash one, and I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. Okay. I get to give you your certificate of election. And that's it. We're going to sign and copy that and print that to us. I guess we can practically give you a copy. Right. So, could we please have a roll call for the board members? Mr. Dunn? Here. Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Ms. Gall?
Here.
Ms. Longbird?
Here.
Ms. Orsi?
Here.
Ms. Halsette?
She's absent.
Ms. Schuman?
Here.
Mr. Van Stone?
Here.
Ms. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Ripley?
Here.
Okay, we are actually going to have a presentation. Ethics training. Oh, we have it already, yes. So, we are going to have a special session, ethic training by our NJ SBA representative, Kelly Mitchell. And that should take us roughly half hours, okay? And then we'll proceed into executive session after that. So, welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come on today, hi everybody. So, we'll be doing our ethics training today. You are required every year to have a discussion about ethics and code of ethics. So, we're going to be reading through those and talking about the tenants in a little bit. So, we'll start with a disclaimer. Well, this presentation is for informational purposes only. If you need to have any type of legal advice, that will come through a board term based on your policies. So, this is not meant to be any type of legal advice. So, we're going to talk a lot about the school act. Exactly, this school act itself is circled around respect and confidence of our people. And we'll talk about our code of conduct, the building's conduct step. And making sure that we don't violate any kind of public trust, or give a justifiable impression among others that such trust was being violated. So, let's say, in terms of the act itself, was to make sure and reserve the public confidence, and make sure that our integrity of our students, our school officials was qualified. So, we're going to talk a little bit of those tenants underneath the consumer rights standard. And that's actually what the provision of the act, when you determine if there was violation against the law. So, the umbrella of the provision, the district school board member's confidence, and the evidence, and the mandatory training that we need to do. And that all school officials have been lied by permission in the protected house, and the distributor forms the personal disclosure. So, this is a snapshot of what the provision of the act is. It's nine members, five school officials, two school board members, and two school administrators. Right now, the two seats for the school board under our boardment, so we like to, you know, hear governor, and just there. That would be mine, it's really interesting work. So, you should receive the permit for your disclosure of your personal disclosure. You should have that in your training, a board number, you should have that done by the end of the year. If you're newly elected, you have to have that done within the first thirty days. Just a little tip when you fill that out, is if you fill out that information in, just save it as a PDF before you clean out that out. Because you don't, you'll lose all that information, I've done it so many times, so just remember to make a PDF. This is just a snapshot of what the training is, and you have to do a mandatory training toward your year that you're in. So, for the first year, first board members, they actually have to do it within nine weeks. We just recently had a new board member weekend, I don't know if anybody attended that. But if you wanted to go to the next one, it's in February, towards next February. Only for VA can sign you up for that. There's no additional cost to the district, it's from friends. So, you're really involved in that information, and it gets new board numbers from all around the state. So, that's really, really scary considering you can't take a weekend to do that. You can do a live virtual during some of the meetings, or you can do a self-paced course, where you can come on and attend it if you want to, or go down and forth on the walk. But that does need to be done in the first one meetings, if you're newly elected. And then the second year is governance two. That's based around policy and finance, and you can really, I'm sure, you have the December to do that. Governance three, that third year is student achievement and information. That is brand new, we just revamped that, and it talks a lot about student achievement. And the light up step, if you're not familiar with that, is so interesting, is the effect that boards have on student achievement and at focus. So, it's very interesting. You can see, maybe if you're not in that third year, so if you want to, and so you can create, you just really can be as a somewhat of that. And then in the fourth, based at returning year, then they would have to do the first year governance for next year's policies. And each year that gets repeated, so if you do want to, because you're not in that third year, so it's interesting, you love this. Any questions on that? They're very straight down in the training, so if you go outside, you have a timeframe, and you have your board service meeting coming, so it's really important that you're going to be in that. So, there's two different functions of the ethics commission. One is advisory, and maybe it's a thought, if any, is any school official should ask about future conduct. So, we were thinking, like, you know, if I do this, would that be considered violation against the act? We didn't go in and send that into the commission, and now they feel very, very honored. If they feel that they want to do that advisory meeting, and there's six members that feel that it's necessary, it's not part of another advisory meeting, then they vote, and then they think that, oh, it's very delicate to us. And we can update on those through your support notes, which is a email that gives you everything on it, so you should see that on there. So, we see this cute old police officer, he's there because I get a lot of times when board members will say, well, it's just an inconvenience, so why do we need to follow that? And the answer is, well, if a police officer says to you, you know, if you do this hack, they're going to have a violation against you, they're going to get arrested, or what have you, you can test their advice. So, we asked the board members to keep in mind, fully, the advisory sentence, you know, pay attention to the advice that's here. So, we didn't need to read through all these, but I do want to point out the second one, it's a new advisory. And they say, a kind of word that I don't want to speak in the researches, is it has a camp in point in the district who is not a member of a union. And people may not believe that, you know, people feel okay to do that because it's not part of the union contract. But then they said that certain components of non-union contracts is really a foundation from a union contract. So, they're saying that, no, we really couldn't be in negotiations because of that convention. So, we're just going to pump this one out, because we're going to talk about negotiations a little bit on the other side, and it's going to show you where you could be part of negotiations or go to that kind of contract. Here's more, I put them all in for packets, and you have copies of all of these. And then the other functionality of the commission is that is, at ex violation, is they can allow company to be hired per year. And they can be from any member of the, so a board member, a community member, anybody who can be employed in for an ex violation. They have a hundred and eighty days to do so, and then they will have to point on the floor what section of the act they feel was violated. And then they'll have the factual evidence to reason why they're saying that there was violation. So, it's quite detailed, but we can get quite a few of them, and a lot of them are based on social media. So, we're going to talk about that in a little bit, but that's the vast majority of the ethics things that we have, are for some. So, these are what comments, when you have penalties against you. So, a letter A is, it's really just a letter to you saying you were in violation, he's just going to do that again, so it's essentially a spot on the list. Then we go to another level, which is a centric. And that is a formal letter that is read by public meeting, and then posted on the website for thirty days. So, that's really more sensitive and stronger. And then we go to suspension. An example of suspension is we had a board member that felt that it was a good idea to do a law, and put all the companies, managers, and everything on it, and that was fine. But then the content piece of what he typed was, speaking for our staff, that clearly goes against the public access. So, there was a system of violations. And then the removal, I haven't seen those in a long time, but that's something for a very high level of, um, of, um, design. So, now, of course, just go around the room and read the tenants, but like I said, you see that standard card, we don't, that is what position looks at when they're determining whether there was violation inside. So, can you answer that?
Sure. Eg, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Asire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
So, when you look at letter A, is essentially we vote that you're stating you're willing to come into office, that you're saying that you're willing to uphold all laws and rules and regulations of the state. So, we have the, we'll go back if there was a specific mandate or a budget, you know, if we go against that, then that could be a violation of going against tenement.
G, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain those laws that are the original needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
So, that release is very specifically to interfere with all children, so creating these signals and voting on things, we have the mind for that, we're making those decisions for all students and all students.
I will confine my board action to policy, meeting, planning, appraisal. And will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those and made a judgment.
So, letter C is certainly great guideline for us, because it's telling us exactly what our board sets for our board members, policy, planning, and appraisal. And that's it, a lot of times, board members come on, and they think that they're going to be rolling up their secrets, and they're going to be all in the name of the daddy, and it's just policy, and then you can figure out that's our top, and that's kind of all over now. So, letter C is very specifically to that.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the school, but together with my fellow board members, to see what they're willing to do.
And so, that speaks to that oversight piece. So, we have the balcony view, where we're sitting up in the balcony, and we're looking down, see the dancers on the floor, but we're not looking down underneath the dancers, telling them where to move and what to do. So, it's just that, well, that we're seeing that everything is well run, and that means that we are that oversight piece, so that speaks very specifically to that.
G, I would recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will not make personal promises, nor take any private action that may compromise the board.
Okay, so we see a lot of times with violation of the, is a board member has part time going from campaign mode, A to board service. So, when we're campaigning, we're saying all personal promises that we'll do for individuals. Well, when we come onto the board, we realize that we don't really have any individual authority, that our authority rests within the team itself at public meeting. So, letter E really speaks very directly to that.
F, I will refuse, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
And so, F really speaks to that political piece, and we have to be mindful that as board members, it's nonpartisan. And a lot of times when we're campaigning, there's political parties that support us, and that's fine, but we have to then say, we have to have our independent judgment when we come here and set a decision. So, letter S speaks very specifically to that.
G, I will vote confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which it disclosed with legalcy injured individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
And so, H speaks very specifically to executive session. So, what happens in the walls of executive must stay confidential. Sometimes we have board members who know that they can develop, and speak to a partner or a trusted friend, and that's not the case. That confidentiality piece is very, very specific, and we need to keep it in those walls of executives. What happens there really needs to stay there.
H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of Chief Administrative Officer.
And so, letter H speaks to the role of the superintendent. The superintendent is the only one that can make regulations for any type of staff member. Board members cannot say, well, you know, I'm a sound student for that job, I'm a recommend sound student. That is the position for the house superintendent, so that's that is true.
I will support, protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties.
So, letter I, when I spoke about the board member that did the law, that was what he violated, and hence our school personnel. So, very important to be very mindful that we support that in their companies.
J, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer, and will act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Okay, so letter J speaks to, you know, we're a pro bono for the community, and the community comes to us a lot of times, and mostly in the unfortunate score, right? Where it's all decided, I'm having a problem with X, Y, Z staff member, or what have you, and that's great, you're supposed to listen and, you know, take in anything that the community says. However, we are not the fixers, so what we need to do with that is speaks very directly to chain of command. So, you have to come on through your dialogue with the community members and say, you know, how did you go when you spoke to the teacher? Do the teachers speak to the school principal? And lead them to that lowest level of chain of command. And if the community member does speak to you around that, make sure that you have spoken to superintendent about it, to give the superintendent a heads up, so the superintendent can help with that situation. But these board members cannot work on this. So, thank you so much, that was great speaking about all the tenants, and I hope that was helpful to kind of shine a light on them. These are some of the sort of ethics cases. We don't need to read through them, but I have them in your packet, and it just shows what a reprimand looks like, a central looks like. And, you know, different, different cases that came about. But I do want to point to the one that had the suspension for sixty days, because it speaks to a board member that's fifteen years plus on the board. So, a lot of times when we do these ethics trainings, they're like, oh, well, I've been on the board for a long time, I know all this. Well, sometimes board members have been on for a long time, and all the rest, you know. So, this was a sixty day suspension, because that board member felt that it was a good idea to go to a staff member's home, give up a letter and support the staff member, give it to the VA, tell the VA, don't give it to the superintendent. And then, when the matter came to the board level, seemed to recuse herself from the situation. So, that was a sixty day suspension, and she went against letters C, D, F, and I. So, super important that we do this ethics presentation every year, just to be in top of the line to that. So, this is a newer guidance, and this came out a little bit before last year, and, you know, it has kind of a little gestur to it. So, we'll go through it, but again, remember, it's not meant to be legal advising anyway, if your board attorney feels differently, then so be it, it stops with your board attorney. But what the guidance is from the commission is saying that a lot of times board members will abstain from something, and that extension is really for if you don't have enough information to actually vote. So, for a legal conflict, they're giving guidance that you should recuse yourself from the discussion and from the voting, instead of saying, I abstained. So, what that would look like is you could have partake in any type of discussion at the table on that, and it really doesn't make sense, because if you think about it, when you're having that discussion, and then everybody votes, what you said could have really skewed the voting. And if you're a legally conflict, that, that's not proper. So, that's the new guidance from the commission itself. And then this is a list of certain provisions under the legislative acts. So, if you do have any type of financial being, any being, and you have more than the same group of board members sitting at the table, you should recuse yourself from those, and if they come to do good business, interest things like that, you should recuse yourself from, like, board meetings. And then they put together a list of what a benefit is like, because sometimes benefits are indirect or direct. So, we put that in there so that you do understand whether you're benefiting from it. And then here's a couple of cases with a conflict of interest that I created, we don't need to read through, but I have them there, so that people can look. And this is a list of definitions, a lot of times, about board members who said he wasn't a immediate family member, was a relative. I did the graph, I mean, there, your packet that goes to in-laws and, you know, things like that, stem children. So, it really spells it all out, so you can see what you're doing, if you're not, so that's in your packet. And of course, we know that you may not hire those, even board member or chief school administrator. If they already were a district, you have some, uh, different examples, or you can leave them, but certainly you can't hire somebody. This is that slide that I was talking about earlier, where you can't, so if you can see at the top, it says, yes, no, VA, you know, whether they're engaging or not, you cannot participate in a negotiation, we're going to rat out that. And this is something that doesn't need to be about, like, if you were, if you received any type of reinforcements, and if you knew it doesn't reinforce anymore, but if they did, you'd have to stay out of negotiations for the first year that you were working. So, just be mindful of that. And then this is newer guidance about impact of community assignments. So, we had a board member that was a board president. That board president can give you personal, negotiations, instructional, or any kind of finesse things. So, they would have to give that over to the vice president, that's as the community shares and things themselves. And then this is very powerful, that board members are saying, well, I was given the advice of counsel that I could do this, so it can't possibly be a violation. And you can accept the advice of counsel to defend yourself against other people. However, it has to have all four of these components to be valid. And the commission is saying that if you have to have four to six, or if you did any of that, to your board attorney, because they're saying that it was like, board members were telling the capital story, and then trying to use the advice of counsel against the school. So, you have to have all four components. We get a lot of questions about volunteerism, and certainly as a board member, you can volunteer, but is that not all of volunteerism? So, if you're a volunteer, if you're interactive, if you're a volunteer, if you're a scout member, then you have to shy away from any of that, but you're volunteering. And also, if you're a volunteer, if you're a board member, you should be doing that. You shouldn't be a staple in your school, so you shouldn't be scheduled every single week to be in an activity. It should just be sporadic, something like, you mustn't allow community meeting, or what have you, or something. It's fine, as long as you're not being directed to something. And then this is something advisory, and it's on the board of the school. And then, let's, we were talking about social media, that like I said, that's the biggest violation that we see on and on again. And so, the commission is saying that it's not so much that you don't have the proper resources, and this is the actual disclosure that you should have, if you're not social media page. Maybe just for some on occasion, and that would be really helpful, to let the public know, that your speech here, first of all, being a non-speaking board member, that's really important, and that's what helps discuss the speaker. But then also, we have to be mindful of the context of that. So, if you're still being, posting by the board member, then that is that justifiable impression that you are not speaking in the public forum. So, that's what we see as violations. So, for our board members, make sure that you're not addressing the board, this isn't any lack. We get a lot of questions that if you drop that disclaimer, is that, you know, going to make sure that you don't require a question, and the answer is no, that gentleman with the law had that problem. So, you have to very, be very specific on the context. And if you're just specifically writing, complaining, and complaining from social media, which that identifies you as a candidate, please don't post from there, that anything that identifies you as a board member or candidate, you should really keep those speeches down, and not post them on the board. Again, questions, you cannot write a post, yes, you can certainly write something, anything asked, we before, he's a cell, I would shy away from, so you know that, huh? And then the new guidance is saying that you should be certified because you can be blocking comments and they send that to the association, you should have that. So that concludes our presentation on that. Any other questions that you'd like to know? And thank you for your time and attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I just want, the committee have a couple of new members, to know that Kelly, as our field service representative, is a resource to anybody. You can contact her directly, I believe we have your card or your contact.
Yes, you have my card in there and you can call me seven days a week. I have board members call me, you know, whenever they have a free moment and they have their questions of board service, something that happened at the board table, anything to do with becoming certified. You know, because there's levels of individual certification that you can have. Allison is working very hard towards all of that and so I answered my phone seven days a week, so if you have any questions, please respond.
The Lighthouse study to which you made reference?
Yes.
Does the board have access to that or is that something that is disseminated through taking the class to which you made reference?
I can send you the slides on it if you'd like.
I just thought it was something that gave the board a sense of purpose and a positive study. I think it would be very satisfying for them to have it.
I think it would be, it's super interesting because it really says that like high-performing boards have that focus on student achievement and it speaks to that very specifically. So, you know, sometimes as board members, we don't know that we can have that power over student achievement any too. So I can, I can send you the slides and you can share it with everybody. Thanks so much, everybody.
Any questions from anyone? Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
So thank you.
Thank you with the tech.
We'll disseminate the physical copy in electronic format and also the presentations. Okay, your motion will now be made at High Point. Board of Education, enter executive session to provide an update on legal personnel and negotiation items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey Public Law 1975 Chapter 231, Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The board will reconvene in public session, in person and virtually at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken and we hope to be back on time at approximately 7:00 PM. So I'll make that motion, Maddy, second.
I second it.
So let's, let's proceed with approval of minutes first and maybe we can even get into public comments after that. Approval of minutes, we're looking to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 17, 2024 and the executive session minutes of December 17, 2024. Reorganization minutes from January 7, 2025 and the executive session minutes from January 7, 2025. I'll make that motion, may I have your second?
I'll second.
Any comments?
What do we need to?
Yes, okay, so you want to mention that? Correction?
There's a date correction in the executive session minutes of January.
So we're looking, there's a date listed in the executive session minutes that's listed as February 1st. Correct that to February 12th.
Oh, for the?
In the minutes.
In the minutes, within good.
Yeah, in the executive session minutes for January 7th.
Okay.
There's a date that's listed as February 2nd, it should be February 12th. Mainly for our reference, so putting people that are involved.
What's listed as February 1st?
Yeah.
And it should be between October and November.
That's right. So with, with that correction, any other comments?
Yes? Yes. Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
So there's two separate ones, I can only abstain on January 7th.
Ms. Longber?
I'm abstaining from December 17th.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Worsey?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Public comments. The first public comment section of the evening, according to the Open Public Means Act, we will open the public comments for agenda items at this time. Each speaker should state his or her name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than 45 minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. And we have two means by which to address the board, both here in person and virtual. We have none, none virtual either. Seeing that we have no public comments, I have a motion to close the public comments.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going to give Mrs. Dolan just a second here. Dr. Ripley, and then we're going to proceed with the special presentation. Ms. Valerie Dolan from Esq. will present a review of the June 30th, 2024 comprehensive annual financial report to the Board of Education. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Oh, excellent, welcome.
Look at that timing.
Yes, perfect.
Perfect timing. Good evening, everybody. First, let me introduce myself, I'm Valerie Dolan, I am the auditor for Esq. We are here to do, we come once here to do the annual audit of the financials. And I do want to say that the district does a wonderful job preparing for us, working with us during the process, going through an audit. It's not easy, it's a lot of information. To give you a little bit of information, there are two reports that we do receive. One of them is our large, big annual comprehensive financial report. It's very big book, it's got four sections. It's a small introductory section, very large financial section, compliance with grants in a single audit section. And then there's a J section, I always refer back to the Js a lot. The Js are 10 years comparative. So it gives you a picture of not only just highway regional, within all, it gives you information on all of your sending districts. Gives you information on the Academy of Sussex, and everything's on a 10-year comparative. So it's actually very informative. Secondly, there's a second report that I do, which is the management's report. It's my report to the board, anything that's involved in the audit, any comments or recommendations that I might have, we'll begin that completely in that report. As it's a lot of information, I always direct everybody to probably what I say are the 12 most important pages of the report, which is your audit schedule C1. If you have your books or want to look back after I'm done talking, it's pages 83 to 84, like to 94, that 12 pages is your budget. So when I look at the audit on a budgetary basis, that's your budget, that's everything that happens. It walks you through all of your revenue, where revenue is landed based off the budget, all your expenses, where anything happened. And it does show you any kind of transfers that were made. So when there's transfers that are made throughout the year, you can kind of see where we made changes. Things come up all year long, as we all know, with budget. When I get to the end, I look at and say, what's the ending balance? You know, I don't like the word fund balance, because fund balance means free and available. But what I call is basically overall balances. So you have a little over $3.8 million in overall balances. That being said, $440,000 are encumbrances. What they represent are things that those services ordered before the end of the year, for which they had not been performed or outstanding, having been received. So they carry into your subs within your budget. You have two key reserves that are set aside, one of them is your capital reserve, which has about $857,000, $857,000 in it. And a maintenance reserve, which has $157,000. The real distinction between the two of them is obviously capital is for capital, and maintenance obviously is to utilize to supplement your maintenance budget. Where those reserves come in handy, especially the capital reserve, is when you Where those reserves come in handy, especially the capital reserve, is when you have grant funding. They like to know that you could pay for the project yourself, or you could pay your local contribution. So those funds are targeted to help you get some grant funding, but also it does afford you the ability to have funds set aside to do other capital projects, funds without going back out to a loaner's core. You do have two pieces of information that go hand to hand with your budget. In the budget that you're currently in right now, because I'm June 30th, I'm still on June 30th to 24th time. The budget you're currently in right now, if you utilize $941,000 to support the budget that you're working through right now, and that leaves you actually with about $948,000, almost the same, to go into next year's building of your budget, which basically means you get to start at the same place you were last year when you're working on your budget. And that leaves you with what I call the real number, which is your allowable fund balance. Out of all that, $3.8 million, you have $553,000. That's your money that you're allowed to hold. The state only allows you to hold 2% of your budget, plus any couple of last-minute allowable adjustments in the form of extraordinary non-public transportation, as the awards are not given to the district until after the year ends, so they allow you to carry that extra money. Few other highlights. We have $1.7 million that ran through local, federal, and state grants. That number, we will start to see it come down as all of the ESRs and every all the COVID funding is picked, has been utilized by June, September 30th. Those grant monies will come back more down in line. You do have a food service fund that generated about $58,000 in revenue this year, so a little bit, you have about $288,000 there. Your transportation services fund did actually, has a fund balance of about $468,000, which is actually about $25,000 less than it was last year. So it's down a little bit. In speaking with the business office, they were going to look at the allocation of expenses and making sure that those allocations make the most sense, so that you don't continue to run out of us. So, I mean, you still have plenty.
That also was a generative fund, yeah, because there are services.
Correct. Are the services matching?
Yeah.
So you've ordered $468 in the fund 50?
Yeah.
We'll be behind the bus.
So you could get your, correct. And that's actually factoring in some of the buses that you did, you did purchase a bus and lose a bus, and I think in the beginning, you'll have like some other busing that you'll probably.
We go through buses rather quickly.
A lot of districts.
Hence our, we were about to just talk about annuity. I'm so sorry.
No, you could. So it's important. And then in my management report, you do have two recommendations in the report that will require corrective action. I would say that they're probably not the most earth-shattering words, so recommendations. One of them is in the area that you are required to submit your board secretary's report through December and June to the county office. All they do with it is check a box. They don't do anything with it. With the switch over personnel and the timing and everything, they kind of got missed. So the county office, during our audit, received full doc, received any necessary documents, but it's a yes/no question that I have to answer, so it, like I said, not an earth-shattering. And then the other one is in the area of the school store. The school store really, and we had a lot of talks about the school store, because it is a really program to help supplement, it's really meant to teach the students how to run a business and that type of information. So really what we want to see more is where, right now, when I look at the school store receipts, they don't necessarily match the red, like the reports. So the closets aren't matching, they're not getting turned over timely, and most, most important, there shouldn't be inventory. There's actually no inventory to be maintained of the items in the school store. So you really part of running that business and being part of this, really understanding inventory and what you do with regulatory and so on and so forth. Nothing earth-shattering, I would say, problematic. You are doing well. We also do have one suggestion to management, which is really doesn't require corrective action. It is just informational, and just to give everybody where there is all of that federal funding that did come out in the last couple of years of the pandemic, where there's federal funding, there are going to be federal auditors. So we will always subject you in auditor, besides myself, to coming. And we do review those, but they go a little more extensive, and where I'm a little bit more, talk to me, tell me all about it, they're like black and white, and you have it, you don't. And so we always just warn everybody, make sure when you're running your grants, that I cross every T, and if and when they show up. They pick different programs every year, and they pick different things. They might never come, but we'd be, you're best interested to know that it's possible. Which is really the audit. I do have other comments on the current state of the projects, but I wanted to make sure there was no questions on the audit itself before I adjourn.
We have the, the audit documents here.
There's also digital versions. The district also has digital versions, so something I'll have to back up.
The blue books are fairly nice, but they think of a lot of space.
They're like a beautiful notebook.
10, 1.
A healthy ear book. You put it on your pillow, you sleep so soundly. It'll make you go to sleep, because it's, there's a lot of information in that.
Any questions on that? So just to reinforce, this was the audit that concluded?
June, like six months ago at this point, yeah, a point in time. So it was really, that's why I kind of like wanted to stop here before I went on to what I really think is most.
Yeah, so we've also asked Dolan to speak about some current financial activities related to our two grant projects, because there was some questions on that.
There were all questions, and there's, the grant projects are interesting in that they're two very great projects, very well-funded. One was funded under one program called the SPVPR program, and the other one was funded under New Jer, a state of New Jersey, SBA, School Development Lot Grant. They put in all the HBC units and events, so they were great projects. What happens with grant funds is grants are reimbursed basis. So you almost have to lay out all the money first, and then get your grant money back. What I think was experiencing the most right now was more of not a grant issue, more so as a cash flow issue. So there was some question as to why those funds were being moved around. It was really, you were using your own funds to pay the bills, so that you could show proof of payment to submit to get the grant funding. It's sort of a horrible way to run grants, and it really does make for collection of grant funding so important and so timely. So when this, when it started, there was concern that you had a very large, $1.9 million HBC program for which you had received $105,000 on, but a vendor who was looking for payment. Since we started this process, you did receive $849,675, and you are almost finished, and I think tonight, I would take Sally, that you added on to pay that final piece to the vendor, which gets your vendor up to date, paid up to date. So your vendors played catch-up. You did get some grant money. You are utilizing some of your own funds temporarily. There will be a one more, I had spoken in depth with your architect also today. You have a submission that will collect another $990,000 towards that project. So you're almost, you're going to get your money back. They fully expect to get that grant funding back by April, so that money should be in. The good news on this whole project, when I look at the picture, which is really what I wanted to do after speaking with finance, was look at the picture as a whole. When you budgeted that project, you budgeted at a much higher cost than it actually came in. So you originally budgeted the grant and assumed and estimated and took from your capital reserve through your budget process, capital reserve of about $970,000 of your own funds. In the end, when the project will finalize and shake out, you will actually be able to, the local contribution is only $650,000. So you're going to gain back another about $300,000 into that capital reserve. That's kind of going to be sitting. It sounds crazy right now when we're saying we don't have enough money, and I'm telling you with like a couple of months, all of the money will be collected from the agencies and returned to their places, and the projects, when it gets closed, will actually give you back funds that you actually earmarked and thought you would have to spend. So that's great news on that project as a whole. We then jumped to the ventilator project on the rod grant, where a similar thing is happening. You are currently in the process of filling out paperwork to collect 95% of the grant, and they're hoping that in the, while we're collecting those pieces, that last 5% of punch list items will get resolved, and actually will be able to submit for the whole 100% of that grant. If not, you'll almost have most of it getting submitted. That project also is under cost. So you had originally thought that you would utilize about $700,000 of your own funding, and you're going to get that number 65,000 back. So when I look at those projects, you're actually going to bring back into that capital reserve about $365,000 by the end of this year. So when I take that, plus that $857,000 that you have already, you're back to 1.2, barring anything that's been taken from the reserve since the start of the school year. That's really important, because I do know from conversations that there were a couple of projects that wanted to be done, that actually hit pause. You did hit pause on them. And so whether you're going to do them now or put them into this budget that you're going to be building, it's important to know that you are going to replenish some of that money. So you're in better shape, I think, than based off of all of the emails and all of the concern, I think, and that was my biggest thing, is I had to be able to look forward, not really do a full audit, but look forward to give you some assurances and some others. So really, you should be, they're expecting by April, you should be receiving about $990,000 on the last piece on that grant, and about $430,000 on the rod grant. So you're going to get a big cash flow in once we finish and pay in line. We'll get them hopefully to step back and let them finish, finish a punch list, so you can finish your projects. Lot of information, but I gladly answer any questions.
As this, you said the state only allows holding 2% of the budget, then that 1.2 million would be more than two percent?
Well, you can hold that in your unassigned fund balance. You can have, your capital reserve can be equal to your long-range facilities plan. So you have a long-range facilities plan that says, we eventually could spend $5 million on this public facilities, or $20 million. That's how much the reserve is allowed to be for capital. And maintenance is up to your M1 budget. You do in October, and what they call an M1 calculation, which is your maintenance budget, and you're allowed to hold, and it calculates how much your max reserve can be. So there are, so the unassigned amount you're calling 12% is the unassigned, not in annual. It's just 2% of your budget plus the allowances, and that's considered. What we call in this world, I guess you call it free balance, available. In the old days, we used to be able to borrow and use it if there was unforeseen special aid costs, but I'm talking back years when it was 7.5%, and it was 5%, then it was 2%, then it went to 4% during the pandemic years, and major rolled back to 2%. So 2% doesn't give you a whole lot of wiggle, where the other percentages used to give you a little more, because part of what I hear in budget this year is unforeseen special aid causes. That's.
Especially when you can't increase your tax levy by 2%.
Yeah. It ties to an awful lot, that your hands are tied for what little you have. So the best advice, we've always said, is to utilize the reserves to the maxes, put as much money so that your capital can be funded, and especially your maintenance can be funded, because your maintenance can offset the maintenance budget, which is actually inside, within your own budget. Capital is for specific capital. Maintenance is for anything that your maintenance be original in, your facilities.
And what is a punch list?
A punch list? You're, they're almost done with the project, but there was probably one or two things that didn't have to be finished. They're missing a piece, missing something. They, they, your contractor does give you things that we just haven't finished this, or we have to follow through with something else to make sure that, because part of the requirement, especially on the first grant, is that you need energy efficiencies. So they have to run tests and do certain things to make sure that those HBCs is evaluated, it's part of what they're intended.
I mean, without a stretch, I venture to say we're over 95% on both of those projects, and not further along. So unfortunately, sometimes those punch list items can be very persistent.
Right, which is, that would be my biggest recommendation to the board, and I bring that to the business office, is to say, stay on top of that punch list, because that punch list will drive you getting those final funds. They go very hand in hand, and you want to make sure that those projects are closed, so that you can then get all of your grant money and beat up the projects.
Much then, the remaining issues are putting the free on, whatever it is that you, the refrigerator to, and they can't do that in January. So as soon as they're able to do that, they will do that.
It's a little too cold right now.
Because I think they've fulfilled all the other requirements, and just that will end it. And so that's why we're confident, particularly with Mr. Dolan's participation, that this will be completed in April.
What a difference a couple of weeks makes. I mean, so is it fair to say our balance sheet looks pretty good?
You, yes.
It's the statement of cash flows.
It's your statement of cash flows, but in all honesty, isn't even in this book. Interesting, like, now there isn't even a statement of cash flows in here. So, and that's why I even said, like, I have pieces to a story. So I'm glad that, you know, I read, somebody reached out, that Scott reached out to me and said, walk me through where we're at, and let me, let me tell you. And that's why I said, let me look at stuff. I need to look to get a picture. I had a picture as of June of what just got around me, but I'm wanting to catch up to speed, so I appreciate that.
I very much like to thank you for presenting this to the board, and I know we do it typically for the, for the audit, but very important that we heard what we just heard.
Yes.
Relative to the two HBC projects. Finance committee has been discussing at length some, some items there. So thank you for joining us, both at our finance committee meeting.
Glad I could attend, and I'm glad to get, get to some information, and of course, we will stay on top and see to make sure we get to fruition, and, you know, once we get those final projects, I definitely will pop back up here to get those closed out, so that the financials that you're looking at, as soon as we know we can, you're looking at the ones that have the projects, and things back in the places where they actually were. Because that's what happens when you start taking from here to pay Paul. You just got to make sure it goes back the other way, and it will. It's just, it was really a timing issue.
And like you said.
Here that your vendors get.
Probably won't even be a visible, a visible item in next year's after.
Right. It isn't an issue, because it's not something I would have, you know, and that was why. I had originally said, when they originally came to me and said, we have to pay this. We have to pay that, and that was a volatile, we cash out right now. Is the money in the reserve, so you probably have to use it temporarily, and then pay yourself back with the grant money when it comes back.
We're very blessed to have Ms. Valerie Dolan here this evening. She is CPA, a highly regarded individual in the state, throughout the state, for the work that she does with Nissabacia, and for her to come here this evening is really quite impressive, and we're humbled to have you here, and very much appreciate you coming here. And this just further affirms my faith in Nissabacia, but also Mr. Dolan, with whom I've had a very long professional relationship, because she demonstrates that she is professional, and is here to help us with any issues, and she's really blessed us for now 12 years of my, my efforts, and so thank you so much.
Thank you. Not necessary.
So what we did was, thank you, Mr. Rice, for, we have the bound copies and the shore versions.
Yeah, that's the.
Each of which go to, to let you on who's on whose line. What is this one called again?
That's the management report. That's my report to your board.
The management report, and these are the bound copies of the full audit.
The full audit, yeah.
Very good.
They get copies of each.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. If anything else comes up, please look me in the loop, and I will do what I need to do to help you.
I hope I don't talk to you as long as.
Hopefully you won't see me, yes. No, no, till the audit's fine. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Let's go back to the agenda, the presentations. The first item most likely is yours, Dr. Ripley.
Okay, I'm going to read item number eight. Whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2025 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members, and whereas the High Point Regional High School Board of Education is one of 581 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and overseas operations for public school districts, and whereas the High Point Regional High School Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students, and whereas.
And whereas, New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas, New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members, who receive no demuneration for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas, school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas, boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to the school administrators the public's expectations for the schools. And whereas, New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators, such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress Scores and the Preparation of School College Through Advanced Placement Offerings and SAT Assessments. Now therefore, be it resolved that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs toward the advancement of our children's education.
Thank you, Dr. Dole. It always, it always found it curious that this is usually, so to my memory, it's always been put in, in January, right after everybody takes their seats on board. And it's a little bit of a pep talk, I know. It'd be nicer to have this like in the doldrums of July or August, but. School board, being a school board member is, is not an easy task. I think I mentioned to somebody, we're the only elected officials that are mandated to have training. We had that mentioned, you know, earlier during our ethics training. So above and beyond all of this, I think. So next presentation is our student council rep speaker of the house, Kyle Vance.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to begin with January, which was last month, just our theme. We have a monthly theme and for January, it was positivity, which was supplemented with a presentation, which was not only throughout the last, it was a whole week that was broadcast to the whole school. For February, we're doing the same thing with our new theme loyalty. Engish Smith and Kay Farinella are our loyalty themed team for this month. So they'll be making the slideshow and doing the presentation of the other month for that theme. The next thing that's big in the student council community here is mathematics, which we did last year. And mathematics is just a quiz that students fill out online and they can pay $2 to receive their results to their quiz on Valentine's Day. The mathematics quiz will evaluate your responses in line with other students' responses and it will be with a match for Valentine's Day, whether it be friends or, I don't know. I didn't do it last year.
You did.
I'm not sure, actually. I think it's, I think it's just an algorithm. We also have a self-love activity on Tuesday, February 11th, which is sponsored by the Center for Prevention, the Council Department, and impromptu.us. We also have a Valentine's Day practice activity on Friday, February 14th, Valentine's Day, which is sponsored by our student council. And for this, we're doing the door decorating and other things. For the Victoria grams, which were done during the days leading up to the Pretty in Pink Games for Girls Basketball, we sold 28 sets of Victoria grams, which was a Gatorade and a candy, so Gatorade plus candy, which is Victoria, accompanied with a positive message for girls in the team. So we sold 28 and every single girl on the team was supplied with a Victoria gram, obviously accompanying the message, the positive message to the line of this loyalty. That's all I have for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like we have our principal's report up. Excellent.
Good evening, everybody. How are we doing? Welcome to our new board members. Thank you for being willing to serve at High Point Board and we look forward to working with you. That's it. Thank you, Kyle, for your information, some great information you shared there. A couple of key things and also sliding to the athletics as well. We had our Pretty in Pink fundraiser. Those that had a chance to be there or hear about it, it's a fantastic community event. A lot of great community events in place in January. That was about two weeks ago now, a game in the burn, our old SCL rivals. As we said, back in the day, we had an SCL league that was also 17 teams, longer, as many of you may know. But the Pretty in Pink is our 15th year as a fundraiser. So over the course of 15 years, that fundraiser, which was led by Mr. Dexter and one of our former players, has raised over $300,000 as we give it back to local families, indeed, local charities, and then also larger charities as well. So really a kudos to the basketball team, thanks to Coach Ruben, to Coach Montana, Mr. Dexter, and all the girls who were able to participate in that. And again, at the end of the day, it's not about how much money they raise, it's about coming together for a common cause, talking to community members about donations, celebrating each other, celebrating those that have survived cancer. We do a little silence, we also have people come out and recognize those that are women who are recognized. The gym is packed, it's decorated, it's just really a nice, nice event. So really a nice community event that we had a few weeks ago. Also, we had our district music and art celebration night. Again, for those who that may have not participated in that, see, that was our auditorium, filled to capacity, literally, standing remotely. And all of our students, including at High Point, were there for our district music, which includes choir and band for the evening. It's great to see over the course of time, many things suffered because of COVID. Obviously, in terms of a lot of things have changed, but performing arts in general really, really took a drastic hit during COVID in terms of obviously teaching, performing arts. As great as our teachers are, it's very difficult. So to see those numbers come back and as advisors begin to fill up to full capacity now, this many years afterwards is really a neat thing. See all the grandparents, all the, the parents and guardians in the audience with their cameras up, phones along the cameras, these phones, right, recording their third grader or second grader playing the trumpet or anybody singing, right, it's a pretty cool thing. So again, thank you to Mr. Carden, Mrs. Martin, Mr. Slaney for leaving that night, but thank you to all of our performing arts teachers in, throughout the district that come together and really do a one-day rehearsal, it's like a magic show, I don't know how it happens, and then they, then they perform the next day. So it was a really neat thing, again, another awesome community event for this, this month. We also had our first wellness fair for students and staff. That was led by Mrs. Pagans. Pagans is one of our school counselors here. And she said, from the beginning of the year, hey, I think we should do a wellness fair. We talked it out on the ground, I said, let's figure out how to do it. And it was her, really her leadership that brought it to us. We had vendors and programs that came in and enjoyed your lunch. We had a lot of activities going on and it was really well received. Kids liked it because they got some stress balls and things like that that they could take away. There was a lot of organizations, agencies that represented, and she's already got ideas for what it could look like next year, be bigger. It could be a parent night and some other things as well with our guidance nights that we have. So that was a, a good event, we're looking forward to it for next year. We also had one of the most important events in January, our eighth grade open house. So those who that may have participated that in the past as parents, that opened 200 attendees for that event, again, it's about bringing students in the building. We believe our, our facilities, as we've heard, we've spoken about a little bit here, the thing that has the highest scenes to keep the facility so nice. We believe our staff, right, our programs are second in the, and it takes getting into the building to be able to see those things. So we created a night that's for the parents and also for the students. Thank you to Mrs. Cardinal and also Mr. Jack Lee for leaving that. There's so many others that were involved as well, but it was really under their leadership. Everybody have a successful night. As we turn the page to the mid-year, we literally right now are starting our second semester classes starting today. Our midterm exams finished last week. I was talking to Kyle before about, you know, the midterm process, what that looks like for this classes. And as you change that, we are already building the schedule for next year. So Mr. Delaney and our child study team and our guidance team are working hard for the state districts to get that information for our incoming eighth graders, eighth graders and also our current students. So we're excited about, again, the programs that we have here at High Point. You're surrounded by many of them that are right behind you, some photography and artwork that's all around. We're excited to begin that chapter and build the master schedule so that way by April and May, we have a pretty good look at what that looks like. That's all for my report. Okay, Mr. Dole, if I search athletics? Real quick from Mr. Dexter, a couple of highlights. Our winter season, as you know, is all for money. Congratulations to many of our teams who are doing so well. Again, we like to talk about some individuals that we can highlight, and we have several to highlight this evening for athletics. We had our HWS boys wrestling tournament that was held at Teaburg. And earlier in January, again, first place to Gavin Miracle, second place, Jack Kitchard, third place, Jesse Gilbig, and fourth place, Logan Tackeck and Jay the Woodball. So congratulations to all of our boy wrestlers that are part of that. We also had HWS girls wrestling tournament here at High Point, second year hosting that. It was the largest ever. As you know, girl wrestling, girl wrestling in state of Jersey is growing fast. I think at over 144 wrestlers, that's about almost 50 more than they had last year. So it was really a good tournament. And I'd like to brag a little bit about our female wrestlers as they're really, really good. We had two champions, El Blidio and El Changris were both champions. We had second place, Katie Brunner, third place, Gabby Villafana, fourth place, Carly Lockner. And El Changris was named the outstanding wrestler, which is one individual that's chosen for that out of all the wrestlers that were there. So, and for the wrestlers, and one that just shows that to Allison, congratulations to her, she's a freshman. And then we're excited about where that program is going. Also, awesome HWS for our bowling team. We were able to compete in the girls wrestling tournament, or girls bowling tournament, sorry, for HWS. And we were able to procure a pretty dominant second place finish in that for our team. So congratulations to them, though Dr. Ripley has some history with the bowling team a few years ago. And it was just really great to see their success. Kira Lewis, second place, 575 for her series. She has recently surpassed that. Her recent series is about 623, so she's having a really good run right now. Katie Bruno, third place, 542, 542 series, and Rebecca Fetterman placed in the top 10. So those, the girls team did very, very well and placed second place overall. And last, we started an at least led to honor and recognize number athletes a week. This is over the course of the season. Mr. Dexter, I thought the department was the coaches choose an athlete a week, male, female, for each time period. So we have Jack Kitchard for wrestling, Kira Lewis for bowling, Brooke Biden for basketball, Tucker Barrett for basketball, Katie Bruno for bowling, and Carter Julian for wrestling. And also, we had Kira, who written her name a couple of times, was honored on January 12th at Rutgers because she was a chosen, was our chosen for National Girls Bowling Sports Day and was our recipient for that. So they take all the recipients and they bring them to a basketball game at Rutgers. And at halftime, they honor all the females across the state. So Kira talked about that and how meaningful it was for her to be there and be recognized at halftime. So just a, a couple of cool highlights about all of our students and just so proud of them and who they are and what they do, and then our staff for all that they do as well.
Got any questions? Okay, now we get to action items, since we have no other business, we're working on destruction technologies.
So items one through three, faculty attendance for December, 94.5%. Student attendance for December was 99.9% and a suspension report for December was attached. I'd like to keep items four through seven together for is the harassment intimidation and bullying reports with an attachment. Number five is, are the field trips, again, with an attachment. Number six, professional development activities. And number seven was the revised 24, 25 school calendar. Making motions in a second? And any discussion on those items?
Ms. Jiegel?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longber?
Ash.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
DS?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, personnel, Ms. Orsi?
So I'd like to move items one through six together, a hundred and eighty, check them all together, three together. We have substitutes, as listed, Jermaine Herbert, Paige Vier, and, sorry, that's up here.
That is right.
Oh, what's, Dominique DeSavano, Joshua Rother. Number two, we have Daniel Burke as a student teacher from University to start his medical practice experience tomorrow and for the end of the year. Number three, we have an employee who's been on medical leave for a week. Number four, employee on company leave, non-leave. Number five, an employee on medical license, medical license. Number six, a job description, G10, school security officer. Number seven, six period assignments as enlisted for biology, environmental systems, chemistry, physics, and chemistry courses. And number eight, a resignation of a parent profession. So making a motion, giving a second? Second? Any discussion? Robb?
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. DS?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Longber?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Okay, I'll hand the lecture curricula over. Item one to be treated together, one is a recommendation to approve Natalie Smithana as the invite track coach for 24, 25. And two is a recommendation to approve volunteer wrestling coaches for 24, 25, as listed. And item three is a recommendation to approve an overnight trip for the competing members of the boys and girls wrestling teams to attend the NJSI, AKA Individual Wrestling Championships, being held March 5th through March 8th in Atlantic City. The wrestlers qualify and make it to the finals, of course, the rooms will be $126 per night for three nights, six rooms needed. So I'll make that motion on items one through three. Can I add a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? Hope they make it to the finals. Yes, roll call please.
Okay, Ms. DS?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longber?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
And I just want, I was remiss not thanking the volunteer wrestling coaches for that. So thank you, Mr. Talanich and Mr. Webb. Policy, back to Mrs. Orsi.
Okay, we just have one item here with 12, 12 policies that are being revised, listed on mandated provisions from stress up there that are New Jersey state law mandates. And a lot of them are wording like academic integrity, that was one, plagiarism, and that kind of integrity, and obviously there. Should I read them all or?
You don't have to.
Oh, I don't?
No.
I thought you said I did.
We see them all.
So we're making a motion, giving a second for the provisions. Second? Any discussion? I, I did want to add one thing, because there was another small edit that I spoke with Dr. Ripley about today. So since, since we are in the age of student grievance, we struck the time limit in which a student or parent can make a grievance, it would be written as within five school days from the conduct. That was ready to be briefed. So basically, Dr. Ripley and I agreed that having a wider window in which to bring forth a grievance if there is your concern would be better. So basically, it's just.
So we removed any reference to a time restriction of five days?
Is there a restriction?
There is no time restriction. I will tell you that even though it was a policy and parent came and looked to brief, I assure you that I would not have said, oh, we only had five days. That would never happen.
Right, and I think you're too many.
Yeah, there's no, it demonstrates, look, we're here to serve the students and the parents and the community. And if there's something about which they would like a redress from administration, then we serve them there, yes. So we removed any reference to the five-day limit.
Any other comments, questions?
Roll call. Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
So we have no action items under negotiations or buildings and grounds, just under buildings and grounds. I'd like to mention something we've already talked about earlier today tonight that our two huge HBAC projects are nearing completion. And I think, you know, the people that have helped get us there deserve some thanks there, especially our buildings and grounds supervisor, business office, Dr. Ripley, and buildings and grounds committee, because a little bit of work there.
We certainly would not be where we are without Stefan, who is the supervisor of buildings and grounds in our business office, who, and Mr. Kaufman, who have worked diligently, who are the utmost professionals. And truly, it is a team effort. And without their participation, we would not be where we are today. So we're very thankful for that.
So moving to finance action items, I will move 1 through 5 together. One is a recommendation to accept the report of the board secretary, business administrator, for December 2024. Two is a recommendation to accept the report of the treasurer for December 2024. Item 3 is a recommendation to approve the report of transfers and minimum expense transfer report for December 2024. Item 4 is a recommendation for payment of the attached schedule of what it is billed dated January 28, 2025. And item 5 is a recommendation to accept the adult education agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, principal petty cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliation for the month of December 2024. I'll make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I'm just going to note, Mr. Kaufman, the number 3, it looks like so. Okay, so you don't. Oh, wrong name. No other comments?
All right, Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Item 6, I'm going to read as is, and then I'm going to propose an amendment to it. But item 6 is a recommendation that the board of education approves transfers in the amount of $742,110.95 from capital reserve and $124,184 from maintenance reserve for a total of $866,294.95 to capital outlay for payment, number one of the HBAC project for vendor inline HBAC company, retroactive to January 13, 2025. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now that we have a second, I would like to propose to amend that. This is something somewhat late-breaking. We're going to also, well, I would like to propose that we amend, append to this these, the following sentence. Be it further resolved that the board approved payment of $869,523.39 to inline HBAC company, $849,675 from the recent grant dispersment and inclusive of another $19,848.39 payment so as to fulfill outstanding obligations.
Can you have a second on that?
I do need a second also. So we have now a, we have amended, so, let me see. I have to vote on the amendment, and then we will vote on the entire motion as it is amended, okay? So now that we have a second on the amendment, is there any discussion or comments on that? Is it, perhaps, well, let me ask Dr. Ripley to maybe explain why that came in at the.
We received the dispersment from the grant more earlier than we had anticipated. And so rather than having received it at some point in February, sometimes we had heard it might even be mid to late February, we actually received that check, I believe we received it on Friday, and we want to execute it immediately so as to pay outstanding fees to an inline HVAC company who has done the work for us. This will pay them in full up to this point.
So, yes, it was fast-moving, and therefore the reason why. We don't like to do this where we make changes to the table, but in this case, it's to help everyone. So if no other discussion on the amendment, can I have a roll call on just the amended? On adding the amendment?
Sure. Okay, Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes. Okay. So then on the full motion, number 6, including what's there with the amendment, any discussion or comments? I'm just going to, I'll start by saying that, thanks to the, I want to thank the members of the finance committee for their diligence. And I think we asked some, some questions that we got answered. And particularly with Ms. Donlin coming here tonight to explain some of the movements of funds that caused some concerns. I think, I for one, I'm comforted, I'm, I've, I guess, given enough information now that I feel able to vote for this without any, without any qualms. When we see sometimes things that are done retroactively, there's concerns by board members. But I, we were given a full explanation, both in finance and in here. And ultimately, where we end up, as we heard tonight, is a pretty good position with some major improvements to our capital facility as far as the HBAC. So I just wanted to perhaps make that, make that statement.
I would just want to reiterate, if I did not before, and personally, Ms. Donnell and Ms. Jacob Noah, who are exceptional professionals, are someone, are two people in the community and the board who are very proud, are there, working on their behalf. And so I'm very pleased and humbled to be around such professionals who are so deeply committed.
So with no other comments, questions, we'll take a roll call on the full item 6 as amended.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
So I will move the final item, finance, number 7, is a recommendation that the board approves and authorizes the execution of the following tuition contracts between High Point as the sending district and the following districts, and related information as listed. So I'll make that motion, have a second. Any questions, comments?
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Transportation. It's only 12. It's only 11. Can I ask you that?
Yeah, sure. I would be moving all 10. I mean, like, 10 is nothing on this thing. I would move together. It's like I've got an easy one. So 1 is joint transportation, 2 is identity about mileage, 3 is another joint transportation, 4 is holding contract, so is 5, I believe. Yes. 6 is another joint transportation agreement contract, that's a 7. 8 is that as well, I think, yes, and then 9 and 10 are, no, no, take it back. Did I say 10 or 11? There is 11, I can say 11, okay. And then, so 9 is also joint transportation, and 10 and 11 are trips. So I'm not moving trips, obviously, just the payment for transportation on that. Does anybody have any comments on? Oh, go ahead. Oh, I have to move, yes. So I would like to move that. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, I see anybody have any comments on transportation? Any other item 4? So sorry.
You ready? Mr. Vanstone?
Yes.
Ms. Orsi?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Gall?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
That's the end of our action items. Under, I guess correspondence is as good a place as any. I wanted to mention something that I meant to mention at our reorganization meeting and forgot to. I wanted to note the passing of a former High Point board member, Harold Pat Rowan, in December. Not only was he a board member at High Point, but he was a longtime supporter of the High Point baseball program and was also very much involved in in benefits to the community for cancer survivors, of which he was one. And so I just wanted to wish the family our sincere condolences there. They will be missed. Other than that, we have, under miscellaneous, our school board mandated training, which we heard a little bit about earlier this evening. Under public comments, we have our second section of public comments. Same rules apply as the first section. Please state your name and address. I don't see anybody in the room here. Are there any virtual comments? So I will quickly ask for a motion to close public comments.
Motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have any noncommittee board member reports or comments? I see none. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are.
If anyone would like, we have the executive summary and the full bound copy of the audit for you.